Let's get started, terms of commission court come to order. Oh, I'm sorry, sir. Now we can get started. Terms of commission court come to order. It's Tuesday, 10th day of August 2021, scheduled for 9:30 a.m., it's now 9:40 a.m. If you all rise. I've got several folks out sick in the county and there's a constable to go, you want?
Cause I mean, the constable we got lasted so long, he fell off last week.
Hi, this is Jonathan, prayer, this is Chris Seven, Father, we thank you for today. Thank you, Lord, for all that you do for us, and to keep us safe and well. And Lord, help us to make the decisions that we need to make that are good for the folks of this county, guide us and direct us in all we do, and just in my prayer.
Amen. Jordan's pledges.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Hi, I want citizen comments. Andrew Lowe. From Bridge Adam, Andrew, come on up, sir. How you doing?
Morning, I say.
Yeah, three minutes to make your citizen comments, sir. How are you this morning?
I'm great.
I'm great. I realize opportunity, I appreciate the opportunity to inquire about drainage in our county. I realize the statute say the county has no responsibility for maintaining the easements required by the county until they accept and use the easements. However, as each new subdivision is plating, there's an obligation to the existing property owners to ensure properties never in danger of flooding in the past do not flood in the future as a result of unbridled growth resulting in increased runoff into the existing and unmaintained drainage easements and tributaries. The county requires drainage easements to be engineered into each new subdivision, but the county refuses to maintain these drainage easements, and there is apparently no requirement for anyone else to maintain them as designed. This negligent has led to growth in the easements that greatly impedes the outflow of storm water and as new upstream and downstream communities and commercial developments have been added has caused water to back up in areas not previously subject to standing water. The county approves these plans for development in piecemeal fashion as they are submitted. The county can and should be the one responsible for ensuring proper drainage is maintained, whether by direct maintenance or ensuring the responsible parties continually maintain their respective segment of the drainage system. Drainage with segmented, unenforced responsibility is inefficient at best and obviously unworkable in its present form. A master drain plan for West Chambers County is published on the county website from 2014 that recommended 70-plus million dollars in drainage improvements in 2013 dollars. I've been unable to find where $1 in bond funds, property taxes collected, or impact fees collected in lieu of taxes as a result of tax abatement since that time has been used to improve the existing drainage system or its tributaries. I'm going to quote from the, from the executive summary of the master drain plan now. Drainage infrastructure improvements will be essential over the coming years if major drainage problems are to be avoided. A comprehensive program of runoff mitigation and improved channel conveyance is needed to prevent such problems. The Chambers County Master Drain Plan provides that needed plan. It appears the recommendations in this report have been totally ignored in favor of new infrastructure that will require even more tax dollars for maintenance in the future, while doing nothing to protect the existing homeowners from the potential flooding effects of new property development and unmaintained existing drainage easements. It seems to me we need to look no further than Harris County for a great example of what unbridled expansion without early adequate and planned implementation of a drainage plan to handle the additional runoff created by new structures will produce. The current owners of existing structures, whether commercial or residential, should be able to pin on our county officials to plan for the unglamish requirements of maintaining long-term infrastructure, including existing drainage. In the latest bond debt, it is proposed to spend 24.8 million to build baseball fields and 20-plus million for new roads that additional property can be developed that will increase runoff flow into the existing drainage system. We've been told repeatedly the county doesn't have enough funds to maintain our ditches and roads, but there's always seems to be enough money for new roads and their drainage, so the developers in the county can, can continue to profit and tax revenues can be increased. The budgets are set by this body and it's time for this body to direct the seemingly unlimited funds this body is willing to spend on new property development toward improving the existing drainage infrastructure mandated by Chambers County to protect the values of existing property owners. I have several questions and I don't have time to ask them all, so I.
And it's not on our agenda anyway, so sorry, can't answer them.
Okay, but I've made copies. For each of you, and I'll come back next meeting.
Okay, if you want to hand those to Ash.
Got some extras here. Yeah, it's all.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, I say.
Thank you for the time.
All right, 1.1, discuss six city resolution clearing, August 9 through 13, 2021, is Health Center Week in Chambers County, Melly. Yep, oh, William. I didn't see you sitting back there. Who's hiding? Uh, no. She gonna be in sort of. All right, so tell us what's, what's going on? And then we'll read the resolution.
Sure. So we're gonna have, this is Kaylee, Kaylee Smith, she's our executive director for our health centers, our clinics, and I'll let her explain what's going on.
So it's National Health Center Week, the 9th through the 13th, and so that celebrates our outpatient clinic system being federally qualified health centers or community health centers, and so reading the proclamation will give a little bit more history on health centers in general.
Yeah, I introduce everybody to say.
So William Kiefer, our CEO, Lolly Park, who is one of our health center board members, and Stacy Brown, our Director of Community Engagement.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Hi, we're at Chambers Community Health Centers Incorporated, serve the community as a local designated community health center, federally qualified health center since 2007. The health center model continues to prove effective means of reducing healthcare disparities and overcoming barriers to medical care, including geography, geography, income, and insurance status, and in doing so improves healthcare outcomes and reduces healthcare system costs. Whereas in 2020, Chambers Community Health Centers, Bayside Clinic and West Chambers County Medical Center served 12,510 unduplicated patients with 29,373 medical encounters, 498 mental health unduplicated, mental health unduplicated patients with 1581,586 encounters and 604 unduplicated dental patients with 707 dental encounters. With all services provided between two clinical sites and school-based health center in Chambers County. Whereas patients served by community health centers have lower hospital admission rates, lower length of hospital stays, and lower outpatient and other healthcare costs than those in underserved areas without health centers. And whereas during National Health Center Week, we celebrate the legacy of America's health centers and their vital role in shaping the past, present, and future of America's healthcare system. This year's theme is Amer- America's Health Centers Rooted in Communities, therefore let it be known that on this, what is today? 10th day of August 2021, with the Commissioners Court of Chambers County hereby declare the week of August 9 through 13, 2021 to be Health Center Week in Chambers County and encourage residents to express their appreciation for the people, facilities, and all those responsible for continued success and growth in our community. Motion by Sylvia, second Commissioner Combs, and all those said yes. And do we have the resolution?
Come out, we'll have to give it to you. And then we'll get it too.
All right, Billy and Gore, I can't see you. There we go.
Okay, we'll check this with anyone.
I like to say.
In the front row, can we move over a little bit so I'm at a little bit of angle? There you go. Okay, okay, you can probably see. Oh, yeah, hang on. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I love y'all, we're still gonna stand up. All right, 1.2 discussing consideration presentation Talent Yield Coalition Incorporated. Good morning, sorry, Billy, you want?
Yeah, hi, this is Eddie Williams. You want to introduce your guests with you?
First of all, I want to thank the court for permitting us to make this presentation and allow us the time to show up today. This is my partner, my wife, and the co-founder of the Resource Center. And our program director, this is Hannah Gettrich, our outreach coordinator. And that's one of our board members, Dan Walters. She doesn't want to speak, but briefly, we're gonna try to make this as brief as possible. First of all, what we do, they'll explain more in detail, and I think we send presentation packages to all of you all.
Yes, sir, we have.
So you know, know our history and things of this nature, but I just want you, I think out of courtesy, and it's proper, that we all let you all know, that we let you all know what we're about and what we intend to do in, in Chambers County. Some of you already know us, we're about helping, serving people and bridging the gaps between government, social, and other social services entities. We worked in double bio, and hurricane disasters.
And we appreciate it, Dan.
And we worked in, we partner with Chambers Health and a lot of other agencies around here. But I'm gonna give it to them, they, they always chew me out, they say I'm too long-winded, so I don't want to get frustrated.
My wife tells me the same thing.
Thank you again for allowing us to do a presentation to you. The Mycelus Williams Resource Center is really a program within Talent Yield Coalition, which is a 501(c)(3). The organization, what we do in terms of programs that we present is four big pockets. And that's outreach, that's something that we just recently started because of COVID, it made us look at how we deliver our services a little bit differently. So we do have an outreach component to our program now. We do case management. We also have a homeless program and disaster recovery. Disaster recovery, we are not an agency that's going to go out and do the rebuild or the repair. We are an agency that does advocacy, and as, as you know, as many of the individuals in the community that needed home repair, especially in Chambers County, if they were not able to get other agencies to move forward on their home repair, we stepped in and tried to find other agencies that would do it. Let me give you one example, because you can read a lot about us, and I think sometimes success stories kind of tell a lot about what we do. Disaster recovery, I want to give you just a real short story about a gentleman that we met at a food drive. This gentleman was 84 years old, had a mobile home in Huffman. He did not, he did apply with FEMA during Hurricane Harvey, and he was denied, he was denied. But he didn't, he was not computer literate, and he had, y'all are going to laugh, but a flip phone, so that means he had no internet capability. He came to us with food stamps, and as we talked to him, because we do case management, we wanted to holistically know everything that he needed. He said, I need my roof repaired. He's inside Harris County, so the first thing we did, after we realized FEMA would not help him, is to go to Harris County Home Repair. Harris County Home Repair said, no, he is in a mobile home. We only do those that are on block and beam or those that are on foundation. So we said, okay, that's fine. Then we turned around and we said, you know what, he is eligible for USDA, he's 84, he's in a rural area, and he needs his home repaired. We then turned around with the community worker, because remember, he's not computer literate. We had to package him, we, we got the application, it's a grant through USDA for $7,500. So we packaged him, we got his credit report, we, we did all the due diligence for him so that he could apply. He came by our building, probably it took us almost three months to make this happen, but he came by our building, and he was so excited, and he was waving this check in his hand, and he says, I just want you all to know, I got a $4,500 check to get the repairs done on my mobile home. I now can get a roof. That made our day. So disaster recovery, we, we are more of an advocate for the clients in the community. And, and we have to know all of the other agencies and what they offer in order for us to be an advocate for the client. Case management, case management, one of the things, and I know, I know you know this, reading our website, but we give out no money. We give out no money, but everything that we do is free to the, to the community. So when a client comes to us, we're going to find out all of his needs, as well as not only his needs, but the household. So we look holistically as what can we do to help you to take you to the next level? We create a plan of action with them, and we give them referrals, as well as we educate them about various social services within the community. So that's case management. I'd, I'd love to share more stories with you, but that is our payday, success stories, I just want you to know that. The last thing I think that I just want to share with you, we want to be in Chambers County. We are a United Way agent, Baytown, Chambers County funded, and we've done a really good job of, I think, servicing Harris County, Baytown, but we really want to be more into Chambers County. Prior to COVID, we were able to be at the Anoak Library, but COVID hit and we were not able to operate from that location. We are now in Winnie, and we thank very much St. Vincent de Paul to allow us office space to service clients in Chambers County. But again, Chambers County, Anoak was really a perfect location. I don't know if you have any other questions for me, but we are excited to service Chambers County. We feel like we, those agencies that are missing within Chambers County because of our case management and our collaborative efforts for MOUs, we can bring some of those services to the community. Okay, I'm long-winded now, so I guess I better stop at this point. I, I'd like our Director of Outreach and, and Homelessness Program to talk to you a little bit.
Thanks, man.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
Mycelus Williams is about outreach and community engagement. We participate in various events in East Harris County and Chambers County areas such as food pantries, food distribution drives, school fairs, church resorts, and community expos. With assistance of our volunteers, we package and distribute our outreach packages, and this is just an example, and I can leave one here for y'all to look at and see what it's all about. These packages contain our brochure, which includes all of our contact information and needs assessment form and other social services information. During the pandemic, we have also included soap, hand sanitizer, and masks, and these are items that were all donated by various agencies such as Save the Children. From February, from January 1st of this year until today, we have given out over 4,000 of these outreach packages at different events throughout the county and throughout the Baytown, Chambers County areas. We also network via Facebook and Instagram. We've also, during the pandemic, we launched a new website that was, is called www.covidhelpnearme that assists the county, the community in finding various resources near them. In November of 2020, we began our homeless services program to assist in the growing homeless population in our area. We were granted permission to use the space at the Sterling Municipal Library in Baytown to meet those clients which are homeless. And through this program, we have assisted homeless individuals to obtain the necessary documentation such as their ID, birth certificates, social security cards. We've helped also with applying for food stamps, employment services, and medical services. Although the shelter and affordable housing is limited, we have also been able to assist a few of the clients in finding a safe and suitable shelter. From January 21st to, I'm sorry, from January of this year to date, we have assisted over 109 clients just at the Sterling Library location. We've also assisted clients through our phone services and through our office in Highlands, some just show up and we have, have been able to assist those clients. We have recently become a designated agency to refer homeless clients to the Baytown Housing Authority for the new emergency housing voucher program that is, has been established through HUD. And these are just a few of the things that we have done, and as my success story of our homeless client, we had a client that came here, he'd been all over the United States, and showed up in Baytown with nothing, he was at the library, living outside the library. I was able to assist him with getting his state ID and get him food stamps, which led to him getting a cell phone. He was able to get in touch with his family back in California. They sent money for him to come back home, he had employment once he got in California, and he's doing well, and that is my stories for today.
Congratulations. All right, any questions?
What is your schedule, what are you going to do every day?
At St. Vincent de Paul, we're there on Tuesdays and Thursdays. And the, the person that is typically manning that office is out today, but she is valuable, so we are focused on servicing a diverse community.
What's hours?
11, normally it's 11 to 5.
Okay, on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Come up to the microphone, please.
It's normally 11 to 5, but because of our website, people can call, and you can set appointments on the website, and then we have 800 numbers that you can call and make appointments and things like that.
Before listening, you don't tell us that 800 number? What's your website?
It's talentyouthcoalition.org. Okay.
Thank you for everything I do before.
Well, we're really excited about being here, you know, this is the last horizon, everything's coming this way, you know, and, and the thing that always concerns me is it's something that should be about the people, the community, service and helping the people. You know, everybody has a job, and that's obvious.
And there's a need for what you're doing. I've said it over the years, definitely.
Well, let me just say this, it's not something that we can do alone, you do need help and support. And you know, that's why we come to you, I'll let you know we're here, and you know, and I'm sure you all, you went into, you know, if we pick up the phone, ask a question and assist us.
We will. What you can do?
Okay.
All right, an entertaining motion to thank for the Talent Yield Coalition for all that they do. Most of my country ties, thanks back to Mr. Combs, and all those said in favor. Thank you so much, we appreciate it. 1.3, discussing setting a public hearing on August 24th, 2021, 10 a.m., discussing post 2022 budget, 10 budget. Still moving. Post back to Mr. Combs, second back to Mr. Gore. In favor. O's most carried one, four, discussing set a presentation from Susan Dodd, Chair of the Cedar Bayo Navigation District, Cedar Bayo Challenge Improvement Project Status Report. Good morning, Susan.
Good morning. I need a handout too, if it's okay, if you can bring that up to them so they can see it. Well, good morning, I wanted to at least thank all of the commissioners and the judges and the people in the court to at least hear a update from the Cedar Bayou.
We appreciate that.
You're very welcome. I have a few more to share that they needed.
She's good.
All right, so I wanted to at least start by saying the Cedar Bayo Navigation District was generated and created in 1997 by the 75th legislator. And this project kind of started all the way back years and years ago, in July 10th of 2006, when it was kind of accepted. And so I thought it would be nice if I'm the Chair of the Bayou, that I came and explained where we're at, at least with this project, and make sure you knew exactly where proceeding forward. It's kind of exciting time now.
That actually back to 1997 when the enabling legislation was there.
Yeah, so we're really excited at this point. We are at the pinnacle part of this project. It's kind of like the go day, right? So we should be very excited at this point. So I wanted to tell you that the Cedar Bayou now districts works with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, and this project has now been federally approved. And so at this point, I wanted to at least go through some of the highlights of the project, because some people in the court may not know. And then I wanted to at least tell you where we're at with the project, so you have a status update. So the purpose of this project was, the bayou right now has not been maintained. So since its creation, it has not been dredged, and the depths of the bayou ranges anywhere from seven feet to about 10. And so the future of this project would have the depth of this bayou be around 13 feet, which marries up to the mouth of where the Cedar Bayou begins. And that's going to do a couple of things. Number one, Ames Lake will be brought back to its 65 acres of marsh and 15 acres of marsh mitigation. Secondly, we will cut through Devil's Elbow, not that we don't like the elbow, but it's a little hard to navigate. And so it will be a straight through cut through Devil's Elbow, which really help the navigation of the increased traffic that goes up and down Cedar Bayou, including our barge traffic, as we do know that expansions of Chambers County is forthcoming and continuing every year. So this will really help that, it will deviate 1.3 miles instead of going around Devil's Elbow, it will go directly through. The great thing about this is there'll be two mitigation areas that are added to this bayou, which currently we don't have any. So as this project completes and the bayou is then dredged, it will be maintained by the Army Corps of Engineers, which currently we have no maintaining going on. So that's a great thing. So right now, the project has been awarded to a contractor. And so according to the Corps of Engineers, if you flip your page, you're going to see the notice to proceed happened on July 19, 2021. So that contractor has been awarded, and now they have until March 30th of 2021. And now they have until March 30th of 2023 to complete the entire project scope. So what are a couple other things that happen along with the bayou? There's five companies and 11 pipelines that are not deep enough at the current moment. What does that mean exactly? When you're going to do the depth of a channel to 13 feet, you have to give a grace of 10 feet below that. Any pipeline that falls within that 23 feet must be deepened by a horizontal dredge. It can't stay where it currently is due to the dredging activities that will happen down the bayou. So Cedar Bayou works with the Army Corps of Engineers. We meet every Friday at 10:00 AM. In order to help the pipelines navigate through, making sure that their pipeline is going to be removed and dredged further and relocated at a deeper depth within the channel. So that is ongoing at the moment. So if you read the handout, it'll clearly say one of, of course, our risks are with the pipelines because that is ongoing. Our plans are continuing with the pipelines every week. As you know, there's more to a pipeline than just saying simply remove it. We appreciate the city of Baytown, who has helped the pipelines be able to do their applications, the Port of Houston, the GLO, and of course, the Army Corps of Engineers. So I feel we've made great progress on this and continue to make progress. I'm really excited at the point where we are with the project. I wanted to open the floor for any questions.
Really dumping all the spoils onto this deepening the water.
Sure, that's what the mitigation areas are for. So the placement areas are actually placement areas that are along the bayou. If you look at your drawing, you're going to see upwind place and area one and two. So these were areas that are maintained that the spoils will go there. Some of the spoils from Devil's Elbow will go into Ames Lake to make the marsh area. So those will be relocated to be able to generate the 65 acres of marsh. And so, yes, they all have a place that they will build again. Good question. Thank you.
I'm just glad this has gotten off the dead center because a couple of years ago, it wasn't looking good. Appreciate all the work that's been done.
Appreciate Congressman Babbin.
No, definitely. Congressman Babbin is really assistance in this, Billy.
And I had the honor, thank you very much, Sheriff, to be able to take Congressman Babbin down the bayou. It was the first time he'd actually been able to travel down the bayou and see exactly what was going to go on. I think that was a highlight for us as the Cedar Bayou, but it was a highlight for him. We are going to have our groundbreaking ceremony. Judge Sylvia and Billy Combs has been cordially invited. If someone else would like to come, of course, we would be honored. But this groundbreaking ceremony will be on a piece of the Cedar Bayou property. And it will happen on September 1st. So we're excited about that because we are moving on and we are definitely going to get the bayou dredged.
Susan, I got a quick question. You just said that after this project, it would be maintained by the Corps?
Yes.
It would not go through to sponsor anymore with the, you know?
So we're still in charge, like as a non-federal sponsor. But what happens after you get a federally funded project? The federal government has to maintain that depth. So then the project manager, not Lisa McHenry, but another Lisa takes over this project. And then the life of the bayou is then maintained. Where right now, no one would have to dredge it at all if that wasn't the case.
Okay.
So we're still connected as a non-federal sponsor, but the U.S. Army Corps of Engineer has an obligation to maintain the depth.
And what about in the southern piece, towards Chambers Liberty County Navigation District?
It's all the way from the mile marker. It's all the way from our current mile marker where we're going from three to 11. Now, just to let you know, part of this project will deepen the bayou, which does help the flooding. I won't say though, it'll completely eliminate anything by the bridge at 146. It will help because it all will be deeper. But again, we'll do what we can to help out in those areas.
Great, appreciate it.
You're very welcome. Thanks for letting me come and speak.
And congratulations. And who is your contractor?
This is, oh gee, if you didn't ask me that.
I take it back.
No, it's okay. In Louisiana. You asked me that, I'm going to email it to you. But it is a contractor in Louisiana. I'm probably going to step over here and look really quick. I can't believe I forgot. And, no, it happens. And so the Corps of Engineers, of course, went through a big bid study and chose that. And it's going to come back to me any minute. You're very welcome.
All right, thank you, Susan. We appreciate your hard work and no accident on 1.4. And I had said this for the record, Tommy Hammond is not present today.
Nice.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, 5.1, discuss consider, Sam, you out there? Consider resolution adopting civil rights and fair housing policies in connection with the county's participation in fairly funded projects associated with American Rescue Plan Act Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund. Sam.
So as we always do with any federally funded grant, we're going to pass our request that you guys pass some civil rights and fair housing policies. We've talked about it in the past, but American Rescue Act, there's not a whole lot of regulations with it. We're going to operate at the most stringent regulations that we know to make sure that we're covered for any future audits. So this is something that we always do on any federal dollars. And so that's what this item is.
And I talked to Sam this morning, we're planning on table in 5.3 and 5.4 too, correct? 5.3 for sure, but we still want to go far with these other two items, the housekeeping.
Yes, both 5.3 and 5.4 are going to be tabled. We're going to do 5.1 and 5.2 just because they're just housekeeping items. And we might as well go ahead and do them, and that way they're done.
All right, and say motion on 5.1. Second, motion by Commissioner Gore, second by Commissioner Tice. Questions, those in favor? 5.2, discuss consider resolution authorizing the acceptance of American Rescue Plan Act, Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Funds, and authorize the county judge to act as the county's county's chief executive officer, officer, and authorize representative in all matters pertaining to implementation.
Thank you. We always.
Motion by Commissioner Gore, second by Commissioner Tice.
Just for the record, I always, we always have the judge be the authorized representative and signatory on everything. We bring it through court for you guys and for the public to be aware of everything that we're doing, but it's just easier to have one person sign. And that's all I have. We're going to table 5.3 and 5.4. We've got an additional item which you guys are all aware of that we're considering adding in.
Yeah, and it's, we're looking at deal issues with coronavirus. So that's. All right, those in favor on 5.2? Opposed most carries 5.3 and 5.4 are tabled, is BJ?
Yes, he's out here. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Sam. Susan, did you think of the name? 5.5, discuss consider, Avera P8CPL-1 Propco LLC Tax Abatement Agreement Amendment.
BJ.
Thank you, Judge. Commissioners, you may recall last court, the court approves that amending the agreement between the county and P8CPL-1 Propco LLC. And this simply is the actual draft of the agreement or the amendment to the agreement for approval.
First by Commissioner Combs, second by Commissioner Tice. Questions? For the favor?
Aye.
Opposed most carries? 5.6, discuss consider amendment to Hunt Southwest Cedarport 1 LLC Tax Abatement Agreement. BJ.
Thank you, Judge and Commissioners. What you have before you is a request from Hunt Southwest Cedarport 1 LLC to amend the tax payment that they entered into with the county back in 2020. This is in pursuit of a tenant for their million-plus square foot facility they have in Cedarport. As noted in the cover letter to Judge Sylvia, the tenant is a fortune, the potential tenant is a Fortune 100 tenant, and is a current taxpayer or current employer in Chambers County. The profile of the project is potential to create more than 150 full-time jobs with an average annual inventory at rendering at $50 million plus. The tenant anticipates making approximately $20 million in leasehold improvements along with the adding of additional $30 million for material handling equipment and racking systems. In the second to last paragraph, just to reiterate that the prospective tenant is a significant employer in the county as it stands right now. So the context is the request for, to consider this on the business retention and expansion request for buildings built on a speculative development. Hunt goes on to reiterate that the, they were just four months into completing their project and now they have, this is the second very serious potential tenant that's considered for that building. So what we have on the second page of the exhibit for this is a recommendation from the foundation based upon similar projects that the court has approved. Illustrates, reiterates the project profile, the potential economic impact of having 150 jobs in the county in the warehousing and storage sector, the multiplier effect. And then a recommendation related to similar abatements. Consider a 10-year term and 55% tax abatement over a 10-year period. And the model that's attached to the exhibit illustrates how that would be derived. 2021 shows a $40 million base value, which was the appraised value as of 2021 for that building was essentially a shell. And the next year in 2022, the value would rise up to 90.8 million and appreciate, and these are all modeled at 2% per year. The potential county revenue that would be derived from the 45% of revenue retained along with the potential revenue associated with annual inventory, and that's held constant, total revenue over term for the county would be 4.7 million dollars. So that's what's presented for consideration today.
And that's with inventory guarantee of at least 50 million?
Yes.
And they would be willing to guarantee that?
I think the county has, the county can require that, Commissioner. They've in previous.
Ethic credit?
Yeah. It would be a covenant, an inventory covenant.
I will move forward.
First by Commissioner Combs, second by Commissioner Gore. Any other questions?
Put in that question. Yeah, one, one.
Going to put in your motion and the inventory tax guarantee. Put in your motion and second.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, those in favor? Opposed most carries 5.7, discuss consider TGSCP-6363 Tax Abatement Application.
Thank you, Judge. Last court or previous court, the county accepted a, an application from TGSCP-6363 LLC for a tax abatement. This is a project that is an affiliate company of TGSC report partners. Is the intent to build 1.2 million square foot dock high warehouse. This would be a speculative development, very similar to the projects that have been approved by the court for Hunt Southwest and Avera with the intent of actually landing a tenant. And so the probably, the application was accepted but not approved. Was asked today is the court consider approving the abatement application? And then the next action would be taken to move forward with establishing reinvestment zone terms to be negotiated.
Right, and I think that's important. You know, we had a discussion yesterday, Commissioner Hammond, myself, and BJ about maybe doing something different on actual terms. This does not set us in any terms. It's just simply approving the application with how many terms. So I will now make a motion to approve that application.
First by Commissioner Combs, second by Commissioner Tice. You know, questions, comments, those in favor? Opposed most carries 5.8, discuss consider TGSCP-6363 Reinvestments Zone Application.
Thank you, Judge. This is, again, the administrative requirement by statute noted that if, in fact, the application would be approved and/or accepted, that they could request the establishment of reinvestments on move forward with the tax payment process. And the request is to hold and conduct a public hearing to consider designation of reinvestment zone on August 24, 2021.
First by Commissioner Gore, second by Commissioner Tice.
Is that at 10 o'clock?
Yes.
10:00 AM, yes. And that's in your motion, second. All right, those in favor?
All right.
Opposed most carries? Thank you, BJ.
Thank you, Judge.
Commissioner.
Thank you, BJ.
All right, Parks Recreation 6.1, discuss consider the Wayne Stone Positive Action Committee's application to pay in our bureau in Gregory Memorial Park located in St. Texas. I see now here that they, we haven't received the drawing, so we will table.
But you got the contractor, Judge?
There is a.
So it's rigid contract with LLC. Rigid IT.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're very welcome. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, that sounds good.
All right, Landis-Billi, I tell you what, we, we, we've got attorney lined up for 10:30. His own time he could do it on executive session issue. So it's 10:25, let's take about a five-minute recess and go into executive session under consultation with attorney. And 20.2, discussing student engineering contractual matters from FIBOR, regional drainage project, which follows under consultation with attorney. So 10:24 AM.
Did you want to do the other stuff now or come back later?
No, random march line up at 10:30. So, oh, you mean, okay. We'll go back and give executive session. Let's just go take care of that portion that he's available for. So 10:24 AM, we'll recess to executive session. Hi, Court Coming Order After Recess for Executive Session. No action out of executive session. It's 11:04 AM. We're going to maintenance building 7.1. Discuss and consider awarding Brookstone Construction Phase Two Terms County West Side Complex Project, amount of $10,870,000. Mike?
Good morning.
Okay, this consists of finishing up the Phase Two part, which would be the packages one and five. I know we talked about package one the last time. But both of these kind of go together because of the huge parking and everything else. So they're kind of right there together. Anyway, after a long time working on this project, back even before COVID. Basically, when we first bid this job, it came in at 20 million. If we take both the Phase One and Phase Two, it's going to come in right at $18,370,000 for a savings of about $1,630,000. We've got it valued engineered about as far as we're going to value engineer that it's as close to the same ball fields that we're going to build in anyway.
And on the east side.
Right. And that's four, that's four ball fields there, not eight.
Four, the four ball fields will all be basically.
No, I understand. I'm saying when looking at the price, was the 20 million for eight, now the one point? Or the 18 million?
The 20 million was for just the four plus the three buildings, plus the parking, plus all the infrastructure that went with.
Yeah, there were four in the original plan and there are four that could have been added.
Correct. In this 10,870,000 dollars. What is that? What is that include?
That includes packages one and packages five. That includes packages one and packages five, which is the four ball fields and the uh, community building, the parking and all that.
On page one fifteen.
And I think there's, and I want you to clarify this for me if you can, I think there's some misinformation out there on the ball fields and I could be wrong.
The only ones we're building right now. We've got one, we've got one, another one planned for Winnie and another one planned.
City of Battle.
For.
We haven't got funding for that, is that correct?
Yes, we did.
To the city.
Okay, see that's where my misunderstanding is going, okay, so we're building one in Winnie, we're building one in Midtown. We're building one as a west side complex and we also have one budgeted for Needle Point. Or is City of Baytown splitting that cost with us or we footing it all right now?
We have a understanding between the mayor and city manager, it's not going to city council.
Okay.
To get some assistance on it, I don't have a percentage, you know, we're asking for fifty percent, I I don't know what we're going to do.
Okay, so that that's that was my misunderstanding.
Right.
Okay, I did not understand and and it was brought to my attention, I did not understand that we were doing the fourth one that we had funding for. So if we if we done that. Are we going to have enough funds to do all the other projects, because from the get go, that was not in on it. When we when we pulled back, we funded it through.
We're cutting costs and we're saving some money and that's what we're doing. And I I want to ask, how are we coming on the uh, Winnie for getting uh, help out of Jefferson County?
I've asked the judge, um, have you talked to commissioner? Okay.
And then say we're trying to do the same thing there, I knew we'd cut one point six million on the turf. And Mike and y'all said y'all already engineered them, that one point that money you were talking about there, that that wasn't at one point six million for turf.
Oh, we included turf and a whole lot of other things, you know, we took all the concrete out, we got the uh, you know, basically. We're trying to make all the fields as close as possible to the same exact thing.
Okay, so we're at twenty.
We're at eighteen million, six uh, three hundred and seventy thousand dollars for that project. Which is a sixty four acre facility with.
Box side, running bridge yard.
Okay, that that was my misunderstanding, I did not realize that.
Mike also.
Budgeted in there the 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 field, so we are at, if we budgeted five point three per field, we're.
Yes, ballpark.
I mean, we we need some help out of Bay County, Jefferson County.
We do, I I that was just my misunderstanding, I thought we were still at the fifteen some, so okay.
The underground, what people don't see. You know, what percentage of that sale, one one uh, one complex, uh, let's say the west side complex. What percentage of that is in 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 that contract, would that be twenty five percent that we're not, or thirty percent?
Uh, I don't have those numbers off of the top of my head, but you got to understand that that sixty four acres. Had no water, no sewer close to it, so we're bringing water, we're bringing sewer. We're basically bringing electricity, we're bringing gas, I mean.
Would you let him in? I mean, he's on, I guess you should. Bring him in, uh, somebody else also Hernandez.
That's just Brookstones waiting too, I don't.
Okay, I mean, I didn't know whether he was here on his item. I'm gonna let him in since he's been waiting and then if there is questions, we'll talk to him, we'll let him go. Especially they've been waiting since getting it toward. All right, Jeff. You probably heard the conversation, if y'all have any questions with Jeff. Jeff, you got any input on those questions that have been asked?
I'll ask this question, Jeff, I know you had a little discussed, can Jeff hear me?
Uh, he can, he's listening, uh, he he may not be around.
Anyway, go ahead.
No, I mean, I know I said, uh, Samantha and I discussed it a few weeks ago and I emailed you yesterday about it, the the naming of the ball fields. Uh, we're going to name the ball fields and we, uh, I've got some names, we got some names for some ball fields here in Anewak.
Yeah, I got a name for the west side.
You got a name for it?
But then we'll come to a coroner resolution.
I'll come up with some.
Okay, how?
I'm still naming rights.
Uh, Mike, how how is Jeff going to incorporate that, are we just going to do a big sign or something?
My, here's what I got. And I want a big baseball up on the field where when you walk in, you can see which fields you're going to, okay?
Yes.
So at number one field will be the Spearfield on the west side. So number one will be Spear, it'd be named after uh, the ones that donate. There's there's four guys, three guys, four guys that that donated property originally for McLeod Park.
Yes.
So we'll translate their donation for that park into naming these all fields.
Okay.
So and and like I said, big, huge, Jeff, you're listening, balls, and when I walk in there, I can see which field I'm going to. I don't, in my Bellevue, thank you for the fields, but you got to walk to the field, see which number it is.
Yes.
And then you got to walk to the other one, and now you got to go around, so.
That's not a problem, that's not a problem.
So that.
Yes, sir, we'll get that going, we'll we'll coordinate with Lauren on the names.
Oh wait, hold on, I'm I've got you muted, Jim.
Yes, sir.
Good morning.
Morning.
So I guess you've been hearing the conversation, I don't know if you have anything to add or anyone else have any questions, Jeff?
Yes, sir, I I do, I do, just as a little preamble. Um, Brookstone's been working real hard over the last several months to try to get you the price and the fields that you want. Um, we had a, we had an initial design that was based on some direction from the county. Uh, to avoid some uh, maintenance costs with with aluminum bleachers, but the price for between aluminum bleachers. And the uh, the concrete bleachers were just not competitive to what your county uh, appears to want to spend in terms of a budget. Um, and so the number you're you're going to review today is as close as we can get to what we bid at Anowak. But it is important to re- remember that there are a couple of differences between the prices. First, uh, we do have a parking lot at the west side complex, so we have a much bigger sidewalk. Walking from the side, from the uh, parking lot to the uh, entrance of the complex that we don't have at uh, the Anowak Park.
There is Mike, it's a parking area.
You said we were going to work for the new administrator, okay.
Just don't.
We have some, we're we're trying to get some uh, soccer fields graded out. As well as the uh, small soccer field we're working on with, I believe his name is Jacob. Uh, outside of the of the the fence. And so we have some restrooms that will be always accessible at the west side complex. For those soccer fields, because there's a little bit more room over there. Um, and so those restrooms are a little bit of a cost difference between what we have at the west side complex and Fort Anowak. But it is as close to apples as apples as we can get, knowing that there are some differences just in terms of the overall complex size. In Anowak versus the west side complex. But then when we move to Chambers Parkway and the Winnie Fields, we will also have some differences, for example, the cook, the Winnie Fields already have restrooms. So it's it's what we are doing as best as we can to make all the complexes as equitable as possible.
We're going to build new restrooms at Winnie, those restrooms over there, I mean, I I mean, I haven't, didn't see where we did, said we weren't going to build restaurants at Winnie.
No, you're going to build, all going to be the same, it's going to be a four, four fields with a concession restaurant.
Concession stand?
And restaurant. No, we're doing concession, that'd be air food trucks, and they're right, Mike, and where we sign.
Yeah, but it's not, it's it's just a, it's just an area for the for people to to put their concessions in. It's nothing, it's nothing like we had, it's not a kitchen, no.
That's what I thought. So maybe it's a uh, it's a downgraded concession stand, but.
It's a luxury.
But there will be a concession restaurant in all four complexes.
Okay. Jeff?
Yes, sir.
Well, are we going to bid Winnie and the other City of Battle fields at the same time?
That that is our plan, uh, we'll bid them separately and together. So that if a contractor wants to give you a better price for doing uh, doing both at the same time they can. But the same rate if two contractors are overall lower, because there is a considerable distance between Winnie and Chambers Parkway, you may get a uh, a contractor on the east side of the state that only wants to bid uh, the work in Winnie, it doesn't want to come all the way to Baytown to do the work. So we believe it'll behoove the county to bid them both separately and together.
Okay, or we, and I I spoke with the judge and I think Mike on this here, I mean, when we bid, when we bid Winnie. Uh, we may have to bid it. Uh, if we bid it now, I don't know what your timeframe is to bid it, I mean, if we bid it now, start it now, it's going to wipe out your season next year.
Yeah, we got, and we need to look at that, but actually that's not on the agenda today, but, so we're kind of getting off out here in in left field.
That's right.
Don't play the game, all right, right.
We're still waiting on the surveys anyway, so we got a, we got a ways to go.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion on seven point one. This is my Mr. Task, second back of Mr. Gore, those in favor. Opposed, motion carries, thank you.
Jeff, when are they going to break ground, are they already working on it over there?
Yes, they're already doing groundwork a couple of months ago. All right, seven point two, discuss consider rescinding approval of agenda item seven one from July twenty seventh, twenty twenty one. Uh, Commissioners Court, discuss consider advising, agenda item was discuss consider advising the BKP Design Group Contract Incorporate Changes for the New Tax Office in Mont Belvieu in amount of a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. All right, Commissioner, I think Mary Beth, who wanted to weigh in, is she seeing in the way, didn't let her in, Commissioner. Combs.
Yeah, you let you let Mary Beth in, but no, I I asked that we put this on the agenda. And I'm really sorry Tommy's not here today because he's the one that originally asked to get that approved and he and I spoke yesterday, you know, uh, I'm not against going to tax office, in fact, I very much know we need a tax office there. What I'm opposed to is jumping into this without having a facilities plan. And a more long term uh, goals of what we need to do and how we're going to pay for it. You know, we took a six hundred thousand dollar project and turned it into a three million dollar project. And recognizing health services can pay, you know, sixty percent of it, it still leaves another six hundred thousand dollars unfunded that we don't have, you know, to build it, and I'm afraid it's going to delay getting in the tax office. And one more time, I just, I just think we need to have a facilities plan. What are our priorities, I mean, Mary Beth can weigh in, but I have not heard one word from anybody's and we need a health service building. It's just not being one of the priorities. Um, and maybe we do, I I don't know, but I think that needs to be done in conjunction with when are we going to go out for bond for a jail? And you know, these things we're building, they could be done on bond, they could be long term debt, instead of paying them out of, you know, our general fund. That that's all, I just want us to back up right in the middle of budget season, I'd like to just kind of let's work through this budget. And let's sit down, even if we have to have workshops, let's get a long term plan together. We've got rolling off the tax abatements right now, over the next ten years. We've got twenty one, we got two hundred and sixty two million dollars rolling off. Twenty two, we got forty six million rolling off, twenty three, we got thirteen. Uh, eight hundred and fifty one, two billion, eight hundred and ninety one, you know, if you look at what's rolling off, we got eighteen point nine billion dollars rolling off of abatements. Between now and thirty, twenty thirty one for an average of one point seven billion dollars a year. We can take on debt and not raise taxes and we can build our facilities, I just want us to have a plan, that's all.
Yeah, and it that, and as we talked, that's in the works.
Yeah.
So um, that tenure facilities plan is, you know, we know the, you said, we know the revenue side. Now we got to put the facility plan to it.
Right.
Which is in the works.
And I just, you know, I want this to be a part of, that that's all.
Yeah.
I do too, but I I I don't want to see another portable building if we can keep from it right now, uh. Uh, I mean, Heather, there's no doubt you need the room, correct?
Well, it's more like district clerk.
Yeah, I mean, district clerk, I mean, the district clerk.
So what, yeah.
And the health services, I mean. We obviously need the room.
Well, it's, you grow and you're growing west side, it's going to free up space in the current annex. By doing what we're talking about doing and free up a lot of space, uh, Mary Beth, y'all.
Good morning. Good morning. Uh, so, first of all, thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk about um, our needs as far as health services are concerned. So I'm not sure how many of you have visited the the health department side over in the west annex. And it currently serves uh, the function of the WIC department as well as uh, Shalonda with the um, the health department. But what we are in dire and desperate need of is just expanded office space for our current public health department. Our current public health emergency response, I'm I'm looking at a conference room right now that I have eight employees in that that we just don't have anywhere to put them, and so we know that our our services are growing, they're definitely growing on the west side. And so we do have some grant funded opportunities to remodel the west annex over there. And so I think this might have been how some of the conversations started with um, with maybe expanding office space over there and then looking towards growing for the future and not just patching what we currently have. But knowing that we are going to, you know, continue to grow and expanding just office space as well as exam rooms. Um, and for response for the public health department. So that's how we got involved in the conversation aspect of it, that's where we got brought in.
Thank you ma'am. I think we're all talking the same thing, we want to plan for the future, but I just want to do it as a whole and not as a piece meal.
Well, and and my thinking, we go ahead and design it, we're working on the budget, if we can budget for it, so be it, not, we'll put it on. But I I I feel like we can and I feel I feel like we need to.
Can I bring up one point?
Yes, sir.
That piece of property on the west side. Since we're turning the property over to the city of Mont Belvieu for parks and everything. That piece of property is number one, a very valuable piece of property. And we need to use that property to the best of its ability. Which means we need to be working with the city of Mont Belvieu. So there's some things that we can do with them as we can design what they're going to put in the back. To have some parking that's going to help our building out, depending on how big we build our building. There's a lot of things that I think we need to be talking to the city of Mont Belvieu about when we're designing that building. To get the maximum use out of that property.
Two story is is one of the reasons it went that way.
Absolutely.
Because of the.
Absolutely.
And it's it's, you're talking about the the current annex, the after five o'clock, that parking behind it and in front of it is all used for kids.
But it is right now in our annex right now anyway.
Yeah.
So if we can get them to build the parking. That's advantageous to us, we can use it during the day. And 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 that building can be a pretty good sized build.
My, I'm not saying it's not, it may be, that's the thing, I mean, we may want it.
I'm just throwing it out there.
I want to say it as a part of the overall.
I agree, I agree.
And where the funds are going to come from, that that's that's all I'm asking for. And I don't know how quick we can get some more in the work, I'll let them know how much money we can spend into debt we can take on every year, you know. But I mean, it's a matter of crunching the numbers and seeing what we can afford to do, I just.
Yeah, and and you know.
I just.
We had, we had a seven million dollar increase in fund balance, in the fact that we put a bunch of projects off last year. We had, we had a seventy million dollar increase in fund balance in the fact that we put a bunch of projects off last year.
Yeah.
So, um, there'll be money there. I mean, we hadn't put all the budgets together, which we're working on, but there will be money there to go forward with this project.
And we budgeted, what, sixty thousand for design from the original building?
Yeah, now.
Fifty thousand.
Now we're at one eighty is, uh, that.
Three hundred percent increase.
Three hundred percent increase. And then health services paying for what percent of that?
Sixty percent.
And, and that's something else, you know, even if we go forward, we need to let health services pay for part of the design.
Sixty percent of it.
And, and like I say, I just, all I want to do is back up, make a graph and let's.
Billy, I.
How quick can we put our plan together, right?
Right. Your thoughts should have. It's coming out of our mouths today. We took the oath of office two and a half years ago, uh, uh, on a lot of our projects, but, uh, and I agree with you, but I just don't think, I, I, I don't want to stop with this project right now. And, uh, I think it's an opportunity, uh, for us to, to fill some desperate needs. And, and we do need to do a five, ten-year long-range plan, bringing out a consultant in and, and, uh, we're working on those things right now and, uh, but along, as we get that plan put together, I don't want to stop a few of the projects along the way with health services paying sixty percent of this. And with the abatements rolling off that you just shared with us and the monies that, uh, judges, uh, shared with us, uh, saying that we should be fine with it, uh.
Well, even if you, you go forward with your design, you, you have your tenure plan in the meantime.
We have the money from the design, where's it? Or, I mean.
Yeah, we budgeted six hundred thousand and then sixty percent of this, uh, design or the increase in designs coming from health services.
Mary Beth, what do you, what do you, what are you hoping your, if the top floor is yours, what do you, what do you?
So we will, it'll house WIC. So the WIC department, those offices, interview rooms, breastfeeding room, um, the education classroom, just like that's currently over in the current, um, facility. As well as in the public health department side, which is the current offices, the vaccination room. And then it'll house, uh, other public health offices that have been established since, you know, we outgrew this building as far as public health as soon as we moved in. And then we'd also like to put a patient room in, um, for, um, employee health and wellness. Uh, just in, in, for, for our services here, it would help on the west side as well.
Heard you was putting in a gym and a spa.
I didn't say a gym and a spa. I didn't say that.
That originally came from somebody else.
Yeah, Commissioner Gore, you know, all I've done for the past eighteen months is fight an epidemic. And it just seems like the past week, that's all I've been doing too with, uh, with apparently, uh, um, a gym and a spa as well.
I know, I've, I've had those calls too, Mary Beth, I'm going.
I, I was trying to put a little.
Yeah, and, and you know, if you look at our current workout facility, it's got some machines in it, it's got the basics and that's what I had in mind for you. Not a state law facility, the whole top floor.
How big is one we have over here?
It's about.
About, about eight hundred feet.
Eight hundred square feet.
Yeah. It's not very big.
It's not much.
No.
But, um.
My garage workout.
Just, I mean, I know, I know y'all always want a central warehouse and offices and everything in there as well. How does this fit into that? I mean, if y'all, if we in the future, we wind up building that with all of your offices for all your staff under one roof, how does this fit into that plan? And I think that's what.
That's part of that ten-year plan. I think it'd be a long time before that comes about.
So that's a really, that's a really good question. So part of our, one of our grant funding projects through our COVID immunization grant was a, um, it's a, will be a three-year lease on a, um, public health emergency repair and a warehouse. It does have office space in there, but more than, um, we will utilize all of those offices. So I realize also that, um, in the past, I guess eighteen months, DSHS through CDC, they've allocated four rounds of grant funding. And they're all identified for different areas in the county that the state and the CDC has identified areas that we must target as public health. And so all of those require us to, you know, house those individuals. And so every bit of space that we have, we will be utilizing. And so as far as the warehouse is concerned, it'll be funded through the grant project and it's, it will be a three-year lease, hopefully with office spaces as well, but they won't be empty. What, you know, no, 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 no office space will be left empty.
And, and I know I've spoke with Samantha as well because I know there's a shortfall in funding and I don't know where we're gonna get it from. I'm hoping. I don't know where the extra six hundred thousand dollars is coming from. I was about to ask Samantha, was American Rescue Fund, which I know is stressed thin already. Could we get any of it out of there? I don't think we can. I know.
I think it's probably gone.
It's gone.
Well, we'll, we'll look at it, but I, I think it's, uh, I think you build a bill, I think it's leasing.
That, that.
I had my understanding. Anyway, we, we can, we can look at that also.
I don't, I don't, I don't mind designing right now, but I mean.
Well, that's what we're doing.
I, I, the, the funding.
And that's what I'm talking.
Is my, is my whole goal.
Judge, can I say something?
Yes, ma'am.
Um. Thinking back to, uh, last Thursday in our exercise, our tabletop exercise with the category five hurricane coming up, uh, the bay and, and coming into Beach City. Um, we've been blessed, obviously. I know since I've lived in this county that we haven't had a major catastrophe on the west side of the county. But just keep in mind that the bottom line of everything is about planning, planning, planning and.
And more planning.
And more planning. And I don't believe that any buildings that we build would ever go to waste for storage. If the interstate is knocked down for some crazy reason, the west side will suffer from not having any supplies or, or issues over there. So I just want to remind you that I don't think anything will go to waste in this county now or in the future of building space.
And, and I appreciate you, um, missing that. I forgot I was gonna say something. We had TIGS training last Thursday, um, and we had about fifty show up, so, uh, from all across the county. Training was great. Yeah, so, yeah, I had some judges, so across southeast Texas, most, mostly county folks, but we did have others. And thought it went really well. Um, Ms. Arthur participated. And, um, I looked at some of the remarks and it, it was, everybody was saying I could've moved, so. Appreciate TIGS doing that and everyone that showed up.
Well, and there's nothing like seeing a visual of a map where you have a category five coming in on, uh, landing in Beach City. You're like, your stomach starts hurting again, so.
Basically mine.
Yeah.
Trust me, Billy.
It was your house at ten point.
It was our house right in the middle.
I, I agree one hundred percent. Anything we build where we can use it, we need space. I just want us to get serious about doing some facilities planning.
We're all serious.
I plan on budgeting.
I'll be happy to serve on that committee.
I plan on budgeting for, for a consultant to help us out for next year. I mean, that's, that's where we are.
And I, I'll say this here, and I know I spoke with the sheriff about this here and, and I mean, you're talking about planning, I don't know when you, who's gonna be on the committee or when we're gonna do this planning, but the thing we need to plan for is that, uh, health services and the justice center. That justice center should be designed and ready to go out for.
It's already designed. The jail portion is a must, of course. We all know that.
And you know, there's, we, we need a community building off one forty-six and a.
And we need that too.
I mean, you know, that's not a.
And, and that's y'all's input. The sheriff's needs input, you need.
I agree. I, I couldn't agree more. We, we're gonna have to go to the voters.
That bond, she's our next major November presidential election, not presidential election, I'm sorry.
It's midterm.
Yeah.
Governor.
I would like to see it on there and ready to roll to the voters to have them make the decision what we do.
You, you, you're me vote. Commissioner Hammond said that new building will open a lot of space in the west annex that is better than portable buildings. Just step by.
So anyway, I mean, that, that, i- i- if you're gonna do that committee, you can send a committee this week, Judge, and we could get moving forward on what building we're gonna do, where we're gonna.
Uh, that sounds good.
All right, well, I know where it's going. Y'all know where I stand, so.
So.
I don't mind.
So, do I have a motion?
I'll say it.
You moving to, uh, rescind it?
The motion is to rescind.
Mm-hmm.
So you're rescinding it? Good. I'll vote. We got a motion.
Go to the second part, Dylan.
What, uh, what says motion to rescind approval of the agenda of seven one? If you want to go forward with it, you need to.
I want to go forward.
You need to make a motion not to rescind.
Not to rescind and move forward and, uh, uh, would be.
Uh, you gotta say not to rescind because.
Okay.
The motions aren't good made to move forward.
Make the, the motion not to rescind.
Okay, then I'm second.
Okay, I'll second it and then I want to come.
Go ahead.
We have the money right now.
Passing door.
We have the money right now to go ahead and do that.
Correct.
Before we build, do anything else, I want that.
Well, we gotta go for it.
Yeah, I want the long-term plan in place before we do it.
They should be. All right, those in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
Aye.
Most carries. And what I, I want to pose, Commissioner Collins, for the record. All right, thank you. Um, Mary Beth, if you want to stay on and you can let Ron and Bill's here. All right, safety emergency management, ten one, discuss, consider utilizing independent auditor. For all of the volunteer fire department, George, you've been working right on this.
Yes, sir.
You got the mic?
We had, uh, morning commissioners, Judge, uh, we had budgeted already, we just, uh, George is, we working on the scope of practice, though we just, I think George is still reaching out to some of our vendors. Um, so we just put it back on the agenda to possibly maybe just get a motion to give us a limit on what to look for, um, or we can just table it till next court. Uh, since we're still trying to get one of our vendors to give us the, the cost analysis, because we haven't got the cost back yet.
And just for clarification to the court, uh, Judge, is, um, my understanding was we were trying to get all eight or nine of our volunteer fire departments audited and that was not what we wanted. We wanted one fire department audit that was Old River, that's just, uh, closed. Uh, so to get one done, I do have two auditors that would be willing to do that. I just need, uh, you know, that's what we're doing. Are we doing one? Are we doing eight? Are we doing nine?
Um, I understand Ron, one, correct?
Just the one, yes, sir. That's it.
Okay, and if we have one, then yeah, I can go ahead and get that going for y'all and we'll get that. I've already got the information from Ron as to who the contact is at the Old River, uh, fire department, and that's what the auditor was needing upfront, so we can, we can go forward with that when y'all are ready.
What's the cost?
Anywhere between three and six thousand dollars, depending on the amount of work they do.
So is there an amount not to exceed that we go ahead and prove, so we need to get this done?
Yes, sir. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So six thousand?
Y'all give me enough, y'all give me six thousand, we can get it done, yes, sir. And, and there is good hope that we can get it a lot less than that, Commissioner Gore. But just to make sure that we need to go forward with this, we need to get it done, the outside auditor is ready.
Okay, then I'll make a motion that we approve a independent auditor to audit the books for co-volunteer fire department.
Old, old, old river.
An amount not to exceed six thousand dollars.
That's my commissioner Collins, second back of Mr. Gore. Question. Those in favor? Pose, motion carries, ten point two, discuss, consider approving budget amendment amount of forty thousand, three ninety-five. Fire three, full-time paramedics in response to COVID nineteen surge and staffing, Ron.
Uh, good morning. We put a, uh, a packet, a pretty detailed packet together on, on the needs. Um, the numbers, I have updated numbers for you to give you an idea. Uh, these numbers are from Winnie EMS, uh, Chambers County EMS and from Mount Bellevue. So the average hospital wait time in the month of June was twenty-four minutes. Uh, that's the time it takes us to basically drop the patient off and clear the hospital and come back to territory. Um, in the month of July, it went to fifty-four minutes. And currently, as of nine days in August, because it doesn't include day, uh, we are at a hundred and eighteen minutes of wait times at the hospital. I'm looking at the system status board, the resource board that the, that they have, uh, through Centrak. Every single hospital in our region is currently on the version. To give you an idea on numbers as of right now, Baptist Hospital has ninety-seven patients holding in their ER, which includes seventy-five percent COVID patients and includes twelve ICU patients with no beds on the floor. Uh, St. Elizabeth's has currently sixty-seven patients in their ER waiting to go to fours, uh, four beds. Um, we had a truck last night that went to HCA Southeast, uh, which is over in Pasadena. Um, they were on the wall for four and a half hours. Uh, we ended up, uh, bringing people in to staff, uh, staff an additional truck. Um, it's just, uh, the surge with COVID right now, um, is affecting us and EMS much worse than it did the first time that it came around. Because it's affected the region much more faster and much more as a whole, uh, especially with the staffing at the facilities. Um, the state just approved yesterday to start bringing in, uh, me and Mary Beth got the email notification from the governor yesterday to actually start bringing in FEMA nurses to some of these facilities. They still haven't decided on that process yet, so that's still gonna be a week or two weeks out before that even happens. Um, and I talked to one of the facilities, uh, when I had a conference call yesterday. Um, one of the facilities currently is out fifteen nurses and three of their doctors just in the ER alone because of COVID, which also did not affect us last time as well either. Um, so it's putting a pretty big tax, um, not only on Chambers County EMS, but it's affecting Winnie EMS and Mount W EMS as, as a whole. Um, call volume wise, so in June of twenty nineteen, um, Anawak and, Anawak and Trinity Bay EMS did a hundred and three calls. Last June for us, the Chambers County EMS, we did a hundred and thirty-two. And, uh, this June, we did a hundred and fifty-seven. So the call volume is still continuing to increase. For the month of July, the call volume increased across the county by sixty-seven percent for EMS. Um, and currently in August, we are at seventy-two calls for the, for the month of August, it's Chambers County EMS. Uh, Mount Bellevue and Winnie are trending that way as well. Um, and almost sixty-five to seventy percent of the patients we make contact are, are a confirmed, uh, or potentially, uh, most likely a COVID nineteen positive patient because everybody else in their household has COVID. Um, so it has restricted our part timers from working again like it did in the past. Um, and so we're utilizing pretty excessive overtime. And then also myself, uh, and my admin staff out of the office have been working and covering trucks as well. Um, I worked thirty-six hours as a supervisor on supervisor truck just this weekend alone to help cover. Um, and make sure we had coverage for our staff. Um, so we're asking that we approval to hire three additional full-time medics. It will be covered under COVID nineteen and, and it's re, for reimbursement through FEMA until the death and disaster is, is over. But with the continuing trends in call volume, um, it'll actually give us staff to, to take care of the additional call volume because just, uh, the wrecks, the strokes, the heart attacks, all of those other normal calls haven't stopped, uh, while we're doing all the additional COVID calls as well.
Well, it's increasing call volume and increasing wait time, so it's double.
Yes, sir. Like our, our actual, uh, so our, our, our average turnaround time, uh, for the month of June was, uh, an hour and nineteen minutes. That's from patient con, from dispatch to back in service. Um, as of right now, today, our average wait time just for the, in the last fourteen, or average turnaround time last fourteen days is three hours and forty-seven minutes. So that's our average call time right now. So we're almost three hundred percent above where we were. Um, having three full-time additional medics gives us access to basically staff a fourth truck if needed, if we get back down. And then also three times last week as a county, between us, Mount W and Winnie EMS, we actually went level zero or level one, where we only had one EMS available in the entire county. Um, so that's affecting us as well.
Okay, that, 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 I'd like to, and you and I spoke yesterday, the day before, maybe in the weekend. Um. Do you think, one, these paramedics, Judge, can be, their salaries and everything can be refunded by FEMA?
Seventy-five percent.
Seventy-five percent.
Up through September, Bill, end of September?
Should be a hundred percent through the, uh.
Oh, it's right, a hundred percent. Does the end of September and then expect an extension after that, so.
Okay, we're hoping for an extension, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so this.
So it is a hundred percent.
So it will, it, it'll be, right now, I know it might a lot of additional costs to the county, but we, we will get refunded on the salaries and everything here. But also, uh, I know you and I spoke, Ron, about, we used to have a contract with Acadian. And how we working that now, because we're in hurricane season and we're in COVID. And we get down to one ambulance, I mean, we mutual aid, uh, what's, what's our plan on all that?
We, we have mutual aid agreements with the, uh, with, uh, Galsen County E S D down in the peninsula. We have a mutual aid agreement with the city of Baytown. Um, I haven't found one. I, I know you said that, Commissioner, I did some research. I haven't found a mutual aid agreement with Acadian, uh, but I.
Yeah, we have a contract, we had a contract with them.
We have a contract with them.
That'd be in the court records.
Okay, I, I, I'm, I'm still looking for that and I'll get with, uh, with Heather and then the day and see if we can figure out. I, I didn't find it anywhere, but I need a, I kind of would need to know where to look, to be honest with you.
Heather, he's, he's taking her head up and down.
Yeah, um, so, uh, as far as the mutual aid for like a mass casualty incident or something, um, we, you know, we've been deployed, we use, utilize the E M T F for that. Uh, for example, the other night, Liberty Dayton had a, uh, an oxygen issue at their hospital and had to offload all thirty-one of their patients. Uh, we utilize our mutual aid agreements and we utilize the E M T F to get an ambus and other resources that way. Um, and usually they're there within two to three hours. Um as far as us going down to level zero, I mean, I, we, we have those mutual aid agreements. So if, for example, a call drops, uh we can call them to run that call. But the mutual aid agreements don't cover somebody posting in our territory, if that's what you're asking.
No, and I mean, they're dealing with the same issues we are.
Well, and here's the good thing, normally you get a hurricane, it's not gonna be the whole coast. And there's other parts, we're a big state, and the state of Texas will be sending in um. The ambulances and the ambulances, assistance, so.
Yeah, and right now, the, the plan, uh the plan we've done for the last three years is that when, whenever a disaster. A potential hurricane's heading into the state of Texas, the, the governor's been, and Chief Kid are very. Good about being preemptive and, and, and staging those resources in a location to where they're there. Prior to the storm, they go back to staging, and they're there to come in wherever they need to come in after the storm. It's usually done in San Antonio. So that they're kind of centrally located with, along the coast. Um but all, all those, all those plans are in place at the state level, and at the local level too. Uh that we would put in a star request ahead of time if we knew for a fact. You know, for twenty-four hours out before the storm is making landfall, we'll put in a star request and request additional resources that are gonna be in the county with us. Those to come in and help us after the fact as well. So all.
Um I got a question, Bill, Bill, how are we supplies? How are we on supplies for EMS and department?
Good morning, Judge.
Good morning.
Commissioners, neighbors, we have um. Struggled to get uh personal protective equipment, gloves, gowns, uh coveralls. Uh masks, because they're with the latest wave of COVID infections. We are seeing a huge spike in the demand for that. Um so prices are starting to go up again, and availability is going down. Um we are somewhat ahead of the curve. Um we've been laying in supplies. Uh all along, so we're not in too bad a shape. Um but the, the availability, if this, if this wave, this outbreak continues. And then add influenza on top of it, as we get into the fall, um we could see some, some problems. Um Commissioner, to address one of your questions about some long-term planning. One of the things that a group of county department heads presented to the county commission was a plan. On some important projects that the county needed to do out of the Health Services Fund. Um commission adopted that, that plan, and the only outstanding element that remains in that plan to be executed. Is the creation of a warehouse in mid-county for disaster supplies. Right now, we have approximately four thousand square feet of warehouse space for emergency supplies. Um folks, there are houses in Chambers County bigger than that. Um I have on hand roughly fifty pallets of water. That will take care of about thirteen hundred residents for one day. Um we need to significantly increase our um emergency warehouse space. Both for our, our COVID issues with P P E. Um and for disasters such as hurricanes, you all know from experience that we end up. Basically, the county is subdivided into three islands when we have flooding. Where we need to stage supplies until the federal government and state government can get things in. So if we plan on three days um of self-supplying, we need to have probably. A hundred and fifty to two hundred cases of water located in each one of our three regions of the county. Versus fifty only in central county.
Yeah, we tell our citizens to be ready for seven, two hours, they can themselves, we need to be the same way.
Yes, sir.
So are there any big needs for COVID supplies, P P Es?
Uh at the moment, no, sir, and we're addressing those internally. Uh as I said, we're, we're trying to get out ahead of that, so that we have supplies on hands. Um so.
Thanks, sir. First, my Commissioner Gore, second back to Mr. Tass. Mayor Beth, we're talking about COVID nineteen surge, quick update?
He said quick, but it's a lot of information, but I'll kind of run through it real quick. So as everyone is aware, we do have, um we have had a huge case increase in uh over the past. I'm gonna say three, four weeks, but especially over the past two and a half weeks. Um currently, we have six hundred and thirty-two uh active cases, and that's through uh Monday. Yes, through Monday. Uh currently, we have.
What was the peak last year, Mayor Beth?
I'm sorry, through Sunday. Um I think we had the most active cases we saw were in January. And I want to say that was around four hundred and maybe twenty active cases, and that was in January. We currently have twenty-three known hospitalizations, and we reported one new death yesterday. We are currently number two in Texas for the most cases um over a seven-day average. Per one hundred thousand population, we kind of continue to stay in the top um ten. And Galveston County is right behind us, so it's just, it's not very good news for our region. So over the past.
Mayor Beth, what percentage of those uh people are hospitalized, hospitalized, and what percentage of those are on ventilators?
So I don't have, I don't have that information. Um I'll see if I can get that information for you, I just don't. And actually, to be honest with you, our hospitalization numbers. We only know those just by case investigations, um and through some reporting. But our, our hospitalization numbers probably aren't even accurate, there's probably much more than that.
Okay.
Um. Okay. By precinct, over the past two and a half weeks, I'll kind of break down the cases. Uh so precinct one, a hundred and thirty-six new cases, precinct two, one hundred and sixty-six new cases. Precinct three, two hundred and thirty-nine, and precinct four, one hundred and sixty-one. So they're pretty much, I mean, it's, it's definitely throughout the county. And uh our average age over the past, I'm gonna say two and a half weeks, is still at about age thirty-six. I think our youngest age, maybe one month, and um all the way to, you know, maybe age eighty. But it's still what we're seeing predominantly is in the unvaccinated population. We do know that the vaccinated population can get COVID. And their disease course should be milder, and it's definitely the vaccination should help keep them out of the hospital. As well as reduce um deaths. So that's the information that we have right now. We still are encouraging vaccinations, you know, Governor Abbott did come out yesterday. Um his plan, because of the surge in hospitalizations and the, there's just no availability of hospital beds. In our region right now, there are currently um only six ICU beds in our, in our region. Our current hospitalization rate in our TSA is at twenty-one percent. And for the past seven days, it has been above fifteen percent. It's been hovering right around twenty percent.
You see a lot of increase, Mayor Beth, and people wanting to get the antibody test to see if it's the, the. Shot is still in their system to see if they need a booster or what the schedule is on that.
Yeah, so they're not, they don't recommend the antibody test uh for um, for the vaccination at all. It's not approved um for um, for after you've been vaccinated, it's not even, it doesn't even have an emergency use authorization for that. So once you, there's, there's no FDA approval right now um for a booster vaccination. I think that Pfizer is going to see if they can't get one. But right now, you know, the two-do series is, um once you're, you know, fully vaccinated is what's gonna give you the most protection. So we're not even recommending the antibody test. And also, if you have had COVID. You are gonna have some level of protection that your body produces those antibodies, but the level of protection is still higher with the, with the vaccine. So yesterday, I think like Ron mentioned, Governor Abbott did come out yesterday and say that. Due to the surge and the hospitalizations and the lack of hospital beds and ventilators. And they are going out of state to um to staffing agencies for nurses. Also, they are increasing the uh availability of. The monoclonal antibody treatment for outpatient, those who aren't in the hospitals, to be able to get that treatment. So that's looking good for us, so we can send people to Beaumont, Baytown, and there's a mobile unit. I'm also working with Ron on that, Linda here has been integral also in that. And they are also increasing the vaccination capabilities throughout the state, and so we still have the T M D here working with us. So I'm just gonna go over a few also notes. We have been vaccinating like crazy. We have two clinics this week on Thursday and Friday, in Winnie and in Mount Bellevue. That's on our Facebook page and on the website, um to sign up for vaccinations. We have, we've pinned information on our Facebook page also, because the level of cases has just exceeded our capacity to respond. To make all the phone calls, not only exceeded our capacity, but has exceeded the region's capacity to respond to all the positive cases. So we're eighteen or so months into this, and so we've posted information on if people are positive. Or if they've been exposed to a positive case, the instructions on what they're supposed to do. They know these instructions, and if they don't know them, we'll be happy to give them. We're not gonna be able to make phone contact with everyone, but in order to slow this disease down statewide, or especially in our county. People have to follow those instructions, it's highly, highly contagious. So um if you don't hear from us, it doesn't mean we don't have your case, it means that we just can't reach out to everyone right now. So visit our website, visit the Facebook page, that information's on there. The hospital capacity is definitely overburdened, not just if you have COVID. But if you have any kind of stroke, heart attack, like Ron said, if you're in an accident, schools are about to start back, sports. We need those hospital beds for everyone. So CDC is recommending, as do we, that um. People wear masks in indoor public settings, whether you're vaccinated or um not. So everyone should be wearing masking indoors currently. Schools are starting back, so we just need to do the best we can to protect our students and our teachers and everyone right now. Your hand washing, um hand sanitizer, and just assessing the level of the risk of where you're going. That's all I have.
That's enough.
I know, Judge, I'm sorry, I wish it was better, we're, we, we wish that we all here wish it was better.
I didn't tell you, I mean, we thought it was over with, and here we go again. In fact, our first COVID meeting a couple of weeks ago, so I put on the board, here we go again. And you know, it's. It's been eighteen long months, and we've made some tough decisions, and I'm gonna tell you, I'm proud of the decisions that we made as a team, so thank you all.
Great job, Judge.
I've got a quick question.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mary Beth.
Ron, I, I appreciate having all these mutual aid agreements in place. But I just want to be assured that we will make the call when we get it, and not hesitate to use that. You know what I'm talking about.
Yes, sir. That, a- a- after, we've already, uh we've already had that conversation, and it's, it's already taken care of, Commissioner.
Thank you.
No, thank you, Mr. Alright, I got a motion, second. Those in favor? Posed, motion carries, ten, three, discuss, consider. Well, oh, let me get a second. Alright, on ten point three, motion back to Mr. Gore. Second back to Mr. Tass.
Ron, what's our lead time on these?
On the medics?
No.
No, ten point three, discuss, consider, approving budget.
There's anywhere from. Go ahead, go ahead, start, Judge.
Uh an amount of seven hundred and twenty thousand in the purchase of two new twenty twenty-one Horton F five fifty. Ambulances from southern emergency rescue vehicle sales. Now, Ron.
Uh so the, currently, there's chassis that are available, if we order them now. Um they, the built, the builds are custom-built for us to meet the needs of the medics of Chambers County. They've spent about six months designing an ambulance that's gonna do what we need to do for everything that we do as far as size. Uh flooding, uh the roadways that we have, and things of the nature. Um the current fleet that we have, the small mini mods, um if we get any type of flooding, like for example, in Anawak, which. Miller's, Miller Drive floods regularly with a little bit of rain, um it prevents us from actually sometimes getting out of the station. Um just because those ambulances just sit, let's say, low to the ground. Uh current lead time is anywhere from three hundred to three hundred and twenty-five days, once the order is placed to get the ambulances built and delivered. Now, it's just because of the lead time, as well as the fact that uh with the American Rescue Plan. Um I can, i- i- it's an approved purchase in American Rescue Plan, and the vendor has already told me that they've already received about. Twenty-five orders for new ambulances, so it's only gonna get longer and longer and longer, the longer we wait to order the ambulances, the longer it's gonna take us to get them. Because everybody's trying to use that money to order them right now.
Okay, I mean, and then, and this is coming out, Health Services Sales.
Oh, ninety-one, Health Services. How many days did you say, Ron, I'm missing, I'm sorry.
Uh the vendor, when I talk to the vendor, anywhere from three hundred to three hundred and forty-five days, depending on the.
About basically a year.
About a year, yes, sir. So if we order them right now, we can probably expect them this, this time next year.
And ten two and ten three came out of our internal COVID meetings that we've been having weekly, so. I got a motion, second, questions?
This was all, this all, real, I'm sorry. I, I, I know it came out of your meetings, but I don't know what the heck's going on. You know, we just bought a couple of ambulances, probably three, I think, in the last two years.
Yeah, we explained it to Billy, Ron, Commissioner Combs.
So we have two new ambulances on our fleet, we've got the one that we bought at the start of COVID. And the one that was purchased by Trinity Bay EMS before he took over. Um the one that was purchased by Trinity B M S has been sitting in the shop for the last four months waiting on parts. Um it's a brand-new ambulance, it's under warranty, but it's still waiting on parts. Um and then the other ambulances that we currently have um are all pretty high mileage, and they're all uh, the, it. We're basically, we're averaging one or two ambulances a week that are having to get maintenance done on them, between hours and things of that nature. Um the fleet that we currently have is just not sufficient for the call volume, uh or, or what we have. They were purchased by Anawak EMS with the funding that they had at the time, and, and we understand why they did it, we did the same thing when we were in Winnie. There's that reason that Winnie just purchased a brand-new ambulance of this size to get rid of weight from the van chassis. Uh the van chassis are not designed to take care of the weight of the box, and they're also not designed for. The way that we utilize them in Chambers County as far as the, basically, they're more designed for transfers, if that makes sense, Commissioner. Um you need a type-one chassis that has the larger motor that's designed to sit and idle and things of that nature. Um and those are not, those are just not designed appropriately, and like I said, they also don't, that, you can't get them through water. Um the, the ambulances in Winnie and the ones in Anawak during Harvey and Emelda got stuck in the stations because we couldn't get them out. Uh because they don't sit high enough off the ground, and the air conditioners actually sit underneath the box itself. So once you put it in water, it doesn't have A C. And per the state, if we don't have A C and climate controlled in the back, that truck is out of service, and it cannot be.
Or are they, are we buying chassis and using our boxes, or this chassis and box?
This is chassis and box, and then the, the, the three older ambulances, the mini mods that have. The boxes, the boxes on these ambulances are much larger as well, they're uh fourteen-foot, five, fourteen and a half foot box. The ones that we currently have are twelve feet, um and um. I guess, if you, if you get a chance next week, when I get Medic Twelve out, Commissioner, I'll get you over to the station to look at the difference between. The older boxes and Medic Twelve, the new ambulance, I, you, you've seen how big the difference in the box is. Um you, there's not really much room to work inside those boxes. Like I said, they're designed for transfers. They're designed to do transfers, from like an inter-facility transfer from one hospital to another, they're not designed for, for what we're utilizing them for, if that makes sense.
Thank you. And this here is from Commissioner Combs, I mean, he asked for the same thing in his uh budget, is there's gonna eliminate that?
And we go and get them ordered now.
Yes.
And you know, you're out versus order them first next year, and still you're out, or more by then, possibly.
Possibly.
Alright, I got a motion, second. Those in favor? Posed, motion carries. Thank you, Ron, Mayor Beth, Bill.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ron. Okay, uh eighteen, one, discuss consider reinstating employee benefits to Peggy Roll and Miss Hawthorne.
Uh first, I submitted in the packet a letter um that brought to my attention uh. And really had a pretty good continuation of service over the last fourteen years. There was a twenty-five day lapse in her employment, and I'm asking for her benefits. Uh lost vacation and longevity to be reinstated. We did this back uh a few years ago. For another long-term counted employee, uh and I just would ask the same consideration. And George, um you know, when George asked me that. He, he was put in a situation where he needed to hire somebody with some purchasing experience, and I mean, I immediately hired. This problem, so um. That's been set, and it doesn't happen very often, that's for sure, when you take care of these people who have been truly loyal to this county.
Uh uh motion back, Commissioner Combs, second back to Mr. Tass. Questions? Those in favor? Posed, motion carries. Congratulations. Yeah, and thank you. Alright.
And then I just wanted to add, before you go, if consent that the approval of minutes on number seven, I'm so sorry, I've been in Austin and. Handling statewide business, that we will have a cut-up on July on our next form.
Okay, so no minutes, uh and I do need to, uh uh under payroll changes, number six. Brian Dodges' uh first day of work will be September the first, so. Uh and I did meet with him last week, had very good meeting, um, um, my child was impressed with him. Um but yeah, he's taking a little time. But yeah, he's taking a little time off before, once he retired, he's going back to work.
Too bad, I got a meeting with, he needed to be in.
Well, he might be, he may, he was going, he was going on state, but he may be back where he's.
We got.
On the 25th with TGS and.
I'll check with him, see if he's back, because I'm sure he'll be glad to go.
23rd and 26th, so that whole week.
All right, I mean, we can approve it like it is, he won't actually get paid because he goes to work. The effective date is the 16th, if you want to leave it like it is, that's fine with me.
And I'll ask if he wants to come to the meeting.
Okay, let's just leave the date, take the date. It's one, it's on the agenda, it's like the 16th, I think. And agenda packed. So we'll leave it like it is. All right, so precinct four.
Yeah, I was saying, I got really more of a question on item 1916. That's the, you know, the agreement for the liaison, the mental health. Can we not put some of that cost or can we not pull that cost out of 091?
We should be, Bill, unless, I, I'm sure both of those are paid out on 91.
I thought they were.
Yeah, they are.
They are.
They are, okay, thanks.
That is definitely, all right, two. One.
No, we're going to executive on personnel, the last.
Yes, we have personnel.
Okay.
All right, so I'll turn a motion. First, Michael Mr. Gore, second back, Mr. Tass, approve the same agenda.
Yeah, I got a question on that.
Go ahead.
Are we pulling six?
Or did you want to go to executive session on these personnel issues that are on agenda?
No, but I mean, from personnel.
Okay, then no, we're not pulling six.
So it's approving all items on the consent.
All items, those in favor. Those, mostly carries, so we will go with executive session. The personnel issues and sale of real property at 12:08 PM, we're recessed. Let's take a short break and then go. So it's trick, court come to order and no action out of executive session. So nothing proposed coming forward, we are adjourned in the regular medium, Commissioner's Court at.